Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for April 11, 2023. Please rise if you can so we can salute our flag.
Supervisor Hubbard, can you please lead us?
One, two, three. The states of America, the zero, which stands on nation, under all, in this law, looking at this for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please read out the minutes from our closed session on March 25?
Report out from closed session, March 28 was item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item two pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiator, Nick Marvin, regarding the following employee organization, Service Employees International Union, Local 2015, board action, no reportable action taken. Item three pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiator, Judy Hawkins, regarding the following employee organizations, Sheriff's Management Unit, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, board action, no reportable action taken. Item four pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, in re, national prescription opioid litigation, County of Calaveras et al versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation et al, United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, member case number 1180P45645, board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and as a point, first off this morning, if you're here for item number eight on the consent agenda, it has been pulled off this agenda and will appear at a future agenda. So that's item eight on our consent. Moving on to staff announcements, this is time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public, and we will start with our ag commissioner, Jessie Fowler. Good morning, Jessie.
Good morning, Chair Toffenelli, Honorable Members of the Board, Jessie Fowler, Agricultural Commissioner and Director of Weights and Measures. So I'm here because April of 2023 is Invasive Plant, Pest and Disease Awareness Month. This national outreach between the United States Department of Agriculture and California Department of Agriculture is dedicated to highlighting the impact of invasive plants, pests and disease to raise public awareness about the threat and how local residents can help. Each year invasive insects, weeds and diseased pests cause an estimated $40 billion in damages to plants in the United States. Non-native plants can hitchhike on untreated firewood, attach themselves to cars, boats and other outdoor surfaces, or take a ride in the mail. They can travel to new areas on agricultural materials such as soil, seeds, homegrown produce and plants. Invasive plants and pests have no or few natural predators in their new environments, so their populations quickly outpace native species and spread. These non-native pests disrupt our ecosystems and reduce biological diversity. If you see anything that looks unusual in your neighborhood, please give us a call before it makes it its new home. So any unusual plants, insects or animals, snap a picture and go ahead and give us a call, or you can email them to us. Our phone number is 209-754-6505. Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you, Jessie.
Yeah.
Are there any staff questions? Board members? Public? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Medina, Environmental Health, you're next. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Toffenelli. I'm a little shorter than Jessie. Honorable Board Members, CEO Hitchcock and County Council, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. This past Saturday, Focus and our Animal Services had another successful rabies and microchip clinic. Over 166 rabies vaccines were given, and along with that, 139 microchips were given to our Calaveras animals, and they now have microchips that will make it possible for them to get home to their humans should they get lost. We are so grateful for Dr. Jenny Rengat, our veterinarian that always donates her time for our clinics, and so thankful for our partners with Friends of Calaveras Animal, Focus and our volunteers. Their commitment to our sheltered animals and our animal service staff is to be commended, and we cannot succeed without them. Our next clinic will be held here at the Government Center on Saturday, June 10th, with Dr. Kathy Gatlin from 9 to noon, and we hope to see our Calaveras community out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board questions? Member of the public? Seeing none, we'll move on. Is there any other staff announcements from the staff in the room? Online?
There are no comments online? There are none online?
None online? Okay, we will move on to recognition and acknowledgements, and at this point, I will turn it over to Supervisor Follendorf. Oh, excuse me, to Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair.
Guys, yeah, okay.
This is a proclamation recognizing the 2023 valedictorian and salutatorian from Bret Hart High School. Whereas each year Bret Hart High School selects one student with the highest grade point average to be the valedictorian, and one student with the second highest grade point average to be the salutatorian. And whereas the coursework completed is difficult and the competition for such an honor is highly competitive. And whereas these students serve as role models for their classmates and underclassmen through exemplifying critical thinking, effective communication, problem-solving and organizational skills. And whereas, in addition to achieving the highest and second highest class ranks, these students have demonstrated many admirable qualities such as integrity, hard work, determination and a commitment to excellence throughout their four years in high school. And whereas, these students are honored at their high school graduation ceremony, but because the achievement is so significant and worthy of commendation, the Calaveras Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize them as well. And whereas the Bret Hart High School valedictorian for 2023 is Esmeralda Ruby Rodriguez, and whereas the Bret Hart High School salutatorian for 2023 is Dakota Alexander Stevens. With that, is there any public comment? Seeing none? I'll bring it back to the board? Or does anybody have?
Yeah, why don't you come on up, Scott?
I'm bringing them with me.
Come on, that's fine, bring them up, that's great.
So besides these two being incredibly academically proficient, they are both phenomenal athletes in their own right, volleyball team and wrestler. And it just shows that our kids that participate in school and have a more well-rounded approach accomplish a lot more in life. So I'm so proud of them and all they've done, and I know they will do great things ahead of us and represent our school in the future very well.
Great. Good job, guys. You need, you three need to stay up here, just stay where you're at for a minute. Any more public comment?
Any more public comment?
Well, online?
Any online?
There are none online.
Then I'll bring it back to the board.
Um, oh, is that lighting coming up?
Sorry. I'm not sorry at all. I just want to say, congratulations. I am so honored to be a judge at the Academic Decathlon Speech Contest, and these young men here, or these young students here, represent the same thing that I see there. When I leave there, all is right with the world. It's all in your hands, Amanda.
Thanks, Board.
Good, I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion, and we have a second. A call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0 with one absence. You want to finish recently?
Oh, thank you, sorry. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors commends these students named as valedictorian and salutatorian for the Bret Hart High School class of 2023 on their impressive accomplishments, passed and adopted by the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, State of California, on this 11th day of April 2023.
Come on up, you're free. We're calling.
Cross that line there. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the next one, and I will hand it over to Supervisor Follendorf on this one.
Thank you. Good morning, and I'm glad to see everyone here this morning, thanks for coming. So, this proclamation honoring Bret Hart High School, 2023 CIF Zack and Lucky, State Division V Basketball Championship. Whereas the hard work and dedication, sportsmanship, talent and exceptional team chemistry of the 2023 Bret Hart High School Girls Basketball Team has enabled these student athletes to earn a champion title. Whereas on March 7, 2023, the Bret Hart High School Girls Basketball Team was the first Bret Hart Basketball Team to win the CIF State Division V Northern Regional Championship. Whereas the win on March 11, 2023 is the first state champion victory in the history of Bret Hart High School Basketball Program. Whereas along the team members, the parents, the faculty and the student body of Bret Hart High School, were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unrelenting support. And whereas led by head coach, alternate room, assistant coaches, Iwata, Pierce and Gorma and Stat, Laye, the Bret Hart High School Girls Basketball Team achieved an incredible level of success during their 2023 season. And whereas, and I could call your name, stand up. Tremendous sportsmanship, integrity and character were demonstrated by Teagan, Aswin, Alya, CJ, Kaden, Maddie, Bailey, McKendee, Sophia, Chase and McKenna. Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations, young ladies.
We're not done yet, honey. Whereas winning the 2023 CIF Zack and Lucky, State Division V Basketball Champion brought honor to Bret Hart High School and to the community members of Calaveras County. And at this time, I am going to open it up for public comment. So is there any public comment from anyone in the room?
Scott.
We got Jess too. Where's Jess?
He's coming. Do you think anybody wants to hook that easy? There's no way. These girls are just a phenomenal group of girls. They work so well as a unit and they make decisions as a team, which is very impressive. There are no individuals in this group, there's a one big team, and they've stuck through that even after this, and that's what took them so far, is they work as a unit, they work as a team, they support each other. If it's not all, it's none, and that's so commendable in today's environment.
Coach?
Just on behalf of the girls program, thank you for having us this morning. Really appreciate it, it's a big honor and privilege to be here. Pretty much you hit it on the head, this group is very, very special on how they treat each other, and they are family. And you hear that a lot in sports, but this one, this group really, really is, they don't worry about their individual success, they worry about how everyone's going to do it together.
Are there any other public comment? No? Okay, are there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, and with that, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0 with one absent. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the Calaveras County, State of California, does hereby recognize and congratulate the Bret Hart High School and the 2023 State Champions for Division V Basketball Team on its outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations, girls, it's been an amazing year watching you guys get this far.
My coaches.
Congratulations, young ladies. How many are seniors? This is the only way we get to stand taller than right now. Phenomenal success, ladies. Scott, do you get one?
Yeah, give one to Scott so he can put it in his office.
Again, congratulations, young ladies. Please, Chief.
Do you want?
Uh, Scott, they don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting, they should probably go back to school.
Yes, they should. I would agree with that. I just want to express my gratitude and thanks for the decorations and making us very welcome and the special acknowledgement, it is really special, so thank you all.
You're welcome, and absolutely, yes, great job.
Phenomenal achievement, worthy of.
But they can stay if they want to see how the board runs.
It might be every face. We don't need blueprints.
She doesn't mind it's going. Can you, yeah, can you get me this? Yeah? Yeah.
All right, we're going to move on to the third proclamation, and I will turn it over to Supervisor Stopper.
Thank you, Chair Toffenelli. Whereas, okay, this is a proclamation declaring the month of April 2023 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Excuse, excuse me, my allergies are acting up. This, the tissues here. My apologies.
Take your time.
I will. Okay. Whereas Alcohol Awareness Month is a national public health awareness campaign sponsored by National Council for Alcoholism and Drug Dependence, developed in order to increase awareness and understanding of both the causes and treatment of one of our nation's top public health problems, alcoholism. And whereas Alcohol Awareness Month provides an opportunity to educate communities about the dangers of unsafe alcohol consumption and to decrease stigma and misunderstanding in order to break down barriers to treatment and recovery. Whereas alcohol is the most used substance by both youth and adults, and an estimated 95,000 people, approximately 68,000 men and 27,000 women die from alcohol-related causes annually, making alcohol the third-leading preventable cause of death in the United States. And whereas approximately 35% of the driving deaths in Calaveras County involve alcohol consumption, which is higher than the state average of approximately 28%, and whereas we know that individuals and families have experienced significantly increased stress during the pandemic, along with the fear and anxiety causing strong emotions and leading to increased use of alcohol, which makes it important to know that telehealth and other online supports are available, accessible and effective. And whereas saluting people who are in the recovery from alcohol and drug use disorders, as well as those who have helped them obtain treatment, helps to overcome such barriers by educating the community about the benefits of treatment and affirming the goal that all people with alcohol and drug use disorders should have access to treatment services. And whereas, result, oh, yeah, and whereas, we resolve as a community to continue to support those struggling with substance use disorders as they enter and participate in treatment, and to support strong alcohol policy safeguards to encourage their recovery.
Any public comment?
Good morning, Board. My name is Rob Feldrum, I supervise the Substance Use Department, and I want to talk a little bit about alcohol briefly. Alcohol addiction, also known as alcohol use disorder, is one of the most common forms of substance use in the Western world. Alcohol is a legal beverage consumed in many forms. It is a depressant when consumed in large amounts, causes relaxation, loss of inhibition, sociability and mild euphoria. Alcohol addiction forms when negative consequences of alcohol addiction become severe and the individual is unable to stop drinking without experiencing alcohol withdrawal, which could be life-threatening and may require medical intervention. Alcoholism is diagnosed when drinking habits and alcohol dependence cause negative consequences in someone's life. If you're concerned that your loved one may be struggling with alcohol or alcohol-related issues, my staff will be available for the remainder of April for no-cost alcohol screenings. You could call our office at 754-6555 to schedule an appointment, or stop by between 8:00 and 5:00, located at 891 Mountain Ranch Road, Building L. And just as a side note, Calaveras residents with Medi-Cal can receive services at no cost. I did want Michael Compton to say a few words just to let you guys know what he's doing in our schools.
Hi. So I have the amazing task of working with students in the schools. I go to the high schools, junior high schools and the expansion school. Due to systemic poverty, drug use and media, we're seeing a high rate of kids using, the students estimate it at 90%. So I get the opportunity to go into the schools and do life skills groups, follow to our drug programs and mental health programs, and just give the kids a voice, you know. We're seeing terrific results within the school, number of fights, drug use is going down, and also the, sorry, a little nervous, never spoke behind a board before, also the ceasing of the tobacco flavors, so that's been helping out a lot, but we've started working on it, and thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. I just want to acknowledge the incredible work of the team that works under the leadership of your Behavioral Health Director, Randy Alt, and of course, Rob Feldrum. The team, inclusive of Michael Compton, absolutely makes a difference in your community, and I want to let you know to your team, we see and we recognize the incredible efforts that you're doing on behalf of this community. Thank you.
So when we do these proclamations and we make everyone aware of the problem, it's what we do about it afterwards and how we stay focused on it that matters. And so I immediately was wondering, okay, so what are we doing? How are we going to, how do we track it? How do we know if we're doing better? So thank you for the report. Thank you.
Any further public comment? With that, I'll bring it back to the board and entertain a motion. Any online?
There is none online.
Sure?
Positive.
All right. We check this for Toffenelli. Bring it back to the board. Entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Hubbard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 4-0, one absent of the board. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, this 11th day of April 2023, does hereby declare April 2023 as Alcohol Awareness Month in the County of Calaveras. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to say that, you know, many of us make light of this issue on one hand or another, but I've lived with it in my family in the past, and the struggle many people were working through, I mean, I've seen success with this, and I just appreciate all your help to the community with those working towards bettering themselves. Thank you.
Somebody's right there.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item is general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of this board and is not posted on our consent or regular agenda today. It may be addressed during public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before 30 minutes allotted time, the board may immediately move on to our next order of business. If public comment is not completed by the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So with that being said, do we have any public comments this morning? So with that being said, do we have any public comments this morning? General public comments. Seeing none in the room? Is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
We have no online public comments, so we will move on from general public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may be, may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. And once again, as I announced earlier this morning, item eight has been removed from the consent and will appear at a later agenda. So with that, I ask if there's any board members who wish to remove another item from consent? Hearing none, is there a staff member that wish to pull an item from consent?
Good morning, Robert. Robert Packenger from Public Works, we'd like to pull item 11.
Item number 11?
To the next meeting, please.
To what?
We'd like to pull it and present it at the next meeting, please.
Okay, so we're going to pull it off, and it'll come up in, um, the next meeting in April, which I believe is, what, the 24th? 25th? 25th, yeah. Okay, thank you, Robert. Any other staff member wish to pull an item? Is there anybody online that wish to pull?
There are no online requests.
Okay, public, any public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion that has eight and 11 removed.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Stoppa.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ballen Dorff. Without any further comments, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four, zero, with one absent. We'll move on to our regular agenda, item number 15. Um, this is an action item from Human Services. authorize the board chair to sign a letter of support to advocate for state general fund to provide emergency preparedness and disaster response to support the county Human Services Agency. Corey?
Good morning. Chairman, Members of the Board, Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. Today I'm asking for your board to consider signing a letter of support to advocate for state general fund dollars to provide emergency preparedness and disaster response support to our local county human service department. Local county agencies do pick up not only disaster preparedness, but, but disaster response, and for up to 12 months disaster recovery during and after each event. As you well know, Calabasas County is not immune to such disasters and crises that occur. There is no current funding that comes to our human services agencies to support this effort. We do it because it's the right thing to do, and it's part of working with and for your community. What I want to point out is that just, and I've given you some data, just on a little bit of a snapshot, I want to thank Assistant Director Michael McGonig for getting this together for you. Here in the public, I do have copies, if anyone would like one, maybe you can put them down. Just in 2023 alone, we had five warming centers during winter storms. We had four shelters that opened in response to the recent weather storms. 461 applications were submitted to the federal emergency team, their disaster recovery center, during that short period of time, and we've had 15 incidences in the last two years. Now, some additional data to help you get a sense of the cost that goes into serving your local community. We had 461 potential bed shelter support just in the shelters in, since 2023 began. Now, we've only served 19 people, but I have to assure you that there is staffing waiting to serve the full capacity of up to 461 slots. And we have to do that because you just simply never know when an actual need to recover individuals from their homes or whatever is going to occur. So that is 12 days of open shelter. Warming centers, we had 68 staff. Now, I will say, so much of that support came from our libraries and our library volunteers, which we are forever grateful, but many Health and Human Services Agency support there as well. That was for 17 days of warming center support. And then the disaster recovery center, which doesn't receive any support through the overtime hours that are happening, all of these come from your Health and Human Services Agency budget. And all of these individuals working are doing their other jobs as assigned and then juggling, working a full day and then working the rest of the evening in these 10 to 12-hour shifts. So the disaster recovery center had 16 days at Frog Town, 17 days in our main office in San Andreas, and that was 85 staff in that period of time that were pulled from their regular duties. So this ask really provides dollars to your local agencies to support the staff that would do these functions. It's a total of 140 million to get dedicated staffing, and that's for the whole state. And that is not only for the budget year coming up, but then ongoing revenue that would continue those operations into the future. So to recap, I simply am asking your board chair, sign a letter of support to advocate for the state general fund dollars to provide emergency preparedness and response support to your local human services agency.
Thank you, Corey. Is there any board questions or comments? I, I just want to say personally that, um, your staff, your staff did a great job during the period of the winter storms that we had, and you're right, you guys worked tirelessly for hours and hours and, and visited the disaster area set up over at Frog Jump and then here in San Andreas. You guys did a wonderful, marvelous job, and you helped a lot of people that didn't exactly know what to do and hadn't experienced a lot of stuff that had happened to us. And you guys got all the right people there from the state, federal government, and it was just a great area that it could come in and be directed to the right place. And just thank you very much. I will happily support this letter, um, because we have to continue. We're in an area that we, it seems now, over the past winter, we had storms, we could have fires. Hopefully we don't, knock on wood if we don't, but that's another disaster that we've been experiencing over the course of the last 10 years. And, and again, those centers have to be open, and we have to have the people there available to man those. So thank you very much to you and your staff.
Absolutely, and I'll be sure to take those words back to the teams, and I appreciate your words. Thank you.
So with that, any other board? Supervisor Hubbard?
Can I move?
Uh, we have a public comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry, that's right, sorry.
Is there any public comments on this item?
Marty Crane, Red Cross volunteer for many years and honored to work alongside our Health and Human Services and all the other partners, because as they well know and we all know, nobody can do this by themselves. It takes many partners, all trained and advanced and, and ready to come together and work as a team. And so I just want to say thank you for that. But I found something, and I may be in the wrong spot, I have a question. The draft letter calls for 141 million general fund for 2324, is that for Calabasas?
No, that's state.
I thought I heard you say state, and I thought, okay, so we don't know how much would come?
Correct.
To Calabasas? Okay, that's a little misleading, I think we should kind of clarify that. And then, um, also, when we have these disasters, uh, and we don't know when the next one will happen, I was here one day talking about, we don't know, and the very next day, the, the Buford happened, the very next day. And the reason I remember this, because I'm always telling everybody, don't forget to make a go-bag, do it tonight. You never know, tomorrow might be too late. Well, it was the next day. Anyway, um, uh, so, so many things. When you bring an entire community together for sheltering during a disaster, they bring everything with them. And if they have pets and animals at home, they don't come. Well, because what do they do with them? So the one thing I see, saw was missing in here is, um, a shelter for, uh, an animal shelter. I have been paying attention and attending here for probably 25, 30 years, 25 years or so. Every single board meeting, read every single board packet, and have, we've been talking about an animal shelter for 38 or 37 years. So I think it's time we talked it to death, and I don't know if this is something, this type of funding is something that you-
Sorry, your, your time is up, the lights aren't working.
I want you to look into it. It's time to stop talking about it and do it.
Thank you.
Because we're partners with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two items later.
Yeah. Any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion.
Now can I make the motion?
You can.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Absolutely.
I love Corey Allen, I love, yeah, I love your energy. Thank you.
And I will second that.
A motion by Supervisor Hubbard and a second by Ballen Dorff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four, zero, with one absent. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you so very much.
We'll move on to item number 16. This is an informational item from Public Works. It's received information regarding the Clean California Local Grant Program Cycle Number Two. Yes, Robert?
Good morning. Kelly Zahnizer from our Project Delivery team will be making the presentation for you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy, the best. Hi, good morning, um, my name is Kelly Zahnizer, I'm with the Department of Public Works. Very excited to bring this informational item on Clean California to you today. Caltrans is asking for grant applications for Cycle Two this year. And, um, first off, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the grant and then move through some of the specific requirements of this grant opportunity. At the conclusion of the presentation, I hope to get your feedback on projects that you would like for us to evaluate for this grant eligibility, excuse me. I think I have allergies too. The California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, has created this opportunity, and they're looking for projects to beautify and improve local streets, roads, tribal lands, parks, pathways, and transit centers. The program encourages projects that are a combination of adding beautification measures and art in public spaces, along with the removal of litter and debris. The grant strives to support projects that will enhance communities and improve spaces for walking and recreation. There's approximately 100 million dollars in funds being awarded across the state, and the maximum grant award per project is $5 million. One of the challenging aspects for this grant opportunity, for Public Works in particular, is the requirement for the local match, um, which can range from 0 to 50% of the grant amount requests, depending on the location and the type of project. Our local grant amounts are dependent on the project scope and the benefit to underserved communities. Our Public Works Project Delivery staff has been working over the last couple of months to identify opportunities, and we've come up with some rough ideas on projects that we believe would be competitive and would meet the goals and eligibility requirements for the funding. These projects are included in our staff report. To qualify for funds through this program, the project should meet the Clean California goals, and I'll just go through them quickly. Reducing the amount of waste and debris within public rights away, pathways, parks, transit centers, and other public spaces. The project should enhance, rehabilitate, restore, or install measures to beautify and improve public spaces. The project should enhance public health, cultural connection, and community placemaking by improving public spaces for walking and recreation. And lastly, the project should advance equity for underserved communities. Eligible projects can either be infrastructure or non-infrastructure, or a combination of both, um, that reduce litter, beautify public spaces, and improve public health and foster placemaking. An eligible project area may include local streets and roads, tribal lands, parks, pathways, and again, transit centers and other public spaces. All locations must meet the following criteria, no, the following conditions, and they have to meet all of these conditions or it's an ineligible project. The project is on public property. It is either under the applicant's jurisdiction to make improvements to, or the applicant has written permission from the property owner to make improvements to the property. Partially or fully located in an underserved community, and at least 75% of the population surrounding the project site must be underserved. So we've been looking at this underserved requirement because it was new to our group. We've heard disadvantaged community before, so we're still flushing that out a little bit. Preliminary, we've determined, uh, the communities of San Andreas, West Point, and Murphys would meet this requirement. I, it sounds strange, but according to all of the demographics, they seem to meet those qualifications. For Cycle Two, projects will be selected based on community need, potential to enhance and beautify public space, potential for greening to provide shade and use of native drought tolerant plants, uh, potential to improve access to public space, public engagement in the project proposal that reflects the community's priorities, and then a benefit to underserved communities. Let's see, the project should contain features to achieve the grant's goals, um, and there's a whole list of, um, types of projects in your, in your packet there, but mostly they're looking at projects that will improve, you know, shade tolerant, including, you know, increasing shade to an area, they want to impact global warming in a way, um, permeable surfaces for pavement and, and things like that. And then, of course, beautification like architectural fencing, art installations, cultural elements, um, increasing walking and biking in communities, wayfinding signage, they'll even go so far as, you know, uh, new playgrounds and things like that. So it's pretty exciting. Based on our preliminary, excuse me, preliminary review of the grant application, we believe that we can do two to three applications using our in-house staff. This will be challenging because we are currently getting ready to construct about 10 different projects, plus we've got disaster recovery that we're working on, but we feel pretty confident that we can have, you know, two or three really solid presentations for competition in this grant opportunity. So at this point, um, we're getting ready, we're getting geared up, and we would like to solicit your feedback on this opportunity, and hopefully I can take your feedback, bring it back to the team, we can work on those grant applications, and then, you know, submit something really great and bring a good project to the county. Um, I'm hoping to get your feedback by next week, if possible, so that we have to get this pulled together for the 28th of this month, and, and my apologies for the delay of getting it to you folks, but we've been, we've been pretty busy, so. If I can answer any questions, please shoot away.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Um, I, I look at these proposed projects here, you got four bullet points, two in Murphys. Um, you know, overall, you know, uh, I, 90% of the time when you bring these things forward, I don't see anything in District Five, you know, or, you know, um, a lot of stuff goes up the hill, and when you say underserved, District Five is the epitome of it, especially when it comes to the work that's done by Public Works. Uh, so, you know, to see two projects for Murphys with, Valerie has a lighting district, you know, ki- kind of hits home to me. I mean, maybe some thought process, we had a biking thing go through, uh, District One and District Five this last weekend, and some signs on the side of Hogan, not necessarily just for the bicyclists, for both, because bicyclists need to share the road with the, with the, with the, uh, vehicles at the same time. So maybe a project like that, putting some thought into something like that, and not heavy-weighting places like Murphys, and thinking about the underserved districts like District Five.
I, I completely agree with you, Supervisor Stoppa, um, and, and if I could change the parameters of the grant, I absolutely would make it so that we could include that district every report we run using the, there's, there's a certain tool we have to use to figure out where the grants can be funded, and I, you know, it blows my mind to imagine that Valley Springs does not have that population. We've, we had several different people go through, there's four different metrics we have to use, and I, I, it blows my mind, to be honest. So we, we're going to try to find some other grants so that we can target, you know, the Valley Springs and your community, I know, it's-
Supervisor Hubbard, your lights on?
Yes, I'd like to, thank you, Kelly. I'd like to ask, uh, actually, regarding Supervisor Stoppa's comment, I've always thought that we need to do an art installation on the west- we need to do an art installation on the west side of the county. There's a, I don't know if you're familiar with it, it's called Sensorio. It was done by a guy named Bruce Monroe in Paso Robles, and I believe it was done in 2019. And ultimately, all this artist did was go and cover the hills with solar lights, solar-colored lights. You can't buy tickets. The tickets now are fifty dollars apiece, and you can't buy tickets fast enough because it sells out every year. And simply, it was, it was installed by volunteers, and it's been a huge success every year. And I would love to see a project like that on the west side of our county that actually drives both locals and visitors. I don't know if you remember, in 1974, a guy in Texas buried Cadillacs, and since 1974, people have been driving to see those Cadillacs. We have enough character here in our county to create an art installation, I think, that would actually give back much more than pavement sidewalks.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Definitely, I will look into that. Supervisor Stoppa, there was one other thing I didn't mention to you. As part of the non-infrastructure portion, which would be educating people about Clean California, keeping our roads and things clean, I'm, it's, I know it's not a, it's not a sign or anything being built, but it potentially could impact the entire county by doing a non-infrastructure component to, even if we do a project in Murphys, we can say, keep Calaveras clean and do a media campaign for that. So maybe that could help. I know it's not-
The people driving from Murphys down, down a rock creek, leaving all the trash on the side?
Exactly, trying to find ways to prevent that in, in a non-infrastructure way. So we're trying to be creative.
Supervisor Fallendorf?
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One, just curiosity, I, you've listed what you have with Murphys. I know that they're going through their own lighting district project, and we need to address that, but in terms of the multi-use path connections, why wasn't the bridge in Murphys considered in this application? That's been an issue for the last year.
Sure. So once this board packet went in, we did additional work, and as we were looking at those lists that I provided to you of projects that were eligible, actually, I was just speaking with Robert about this yesterday afternoon, like, why can't we do a bigger project in the park which would include the bridge, which would include some art installations and really enhance that park? The piece of it for, between the other park, you know, the ballpark and the elementary school would just be another element of that project, so we're kind of trying to tie a few things in together. We weren't able to get enough funding to fully fund the Murphys lighting project, and so by incorporating this, you know, throwing a kitchen sink into a bigger project where we're doing the lighting, we're fixing the bridge, we're improving the whole quality of the park, I, I think it's a good opportunity, and that's kind of why we've keyed in a little bit more on Murphys. San Andreas, we were talking about what can we do to improve the parks here in San Andreas. The connectivity of the library to the elementary school in San Andreas is really key for us because of the Pope Street project, so we're just trying to piggyback on other opportunities to bring together a full project. There's no doubt, there's, this grant cannot fix all of the ills of Calaveras County's-
Thank you for that explanation. The other question I had was, as you're doing these improvements, a lot of things that I've heard from parents across the county is more accessibility for their kids on these paths, meaning, I mean, not just to accommodate maybe the strollers, but also those that maybe in wheelchairs or other accommodations, that they're not able to walk their children or use those opportunities because it's not catered to what their individual child needs. So are we considering some of that with these improvements?
Yes, so anything we build that's new is going to have those ADA requirements being met?
Thank you.
Of course.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Maybe you or Ms. Fallendorf can remind me, last year, there was a Safe Bikes and Pathways thing through Caltrans-
Safe route to schools?
No, not Safe Route to schools, but the one that they were doing for expansion on, like, bike lanes and everything. You know, when you brought your list of projects last year, I, there was a substantial amount of money we missed out on because there wasn't a ready project, and that is one that can definitely be used in my district, so maybe if you put some effort towards something like that.
Okay.
You know?
Thank you, yes.
When you say that the things don't come across, that's one that could have been used in that area.
I have one comment. When I heard you answer Ben's question about District Five, and you said Valley Springs doesn't fit, I, I think you're lumping Rancho and Valley Springs together, and with Lock and Tena and Rancho, yeah, it won't fit, but if, if you run your numbers on proper downtown Valley Springs, old town Valley Springs, you're gonna find those numbers will fit. And there's a bus stop there on county property because that road, Daphne Road, is part of county. Can we at least look at putting a charging station there? Could we now have electrical buses, and we're gonna start moving toward more electrical items? And it'd be nice to at least be able to sit there and charge if we need to charge. And then going up the hill into Murphys, looking at some of the areas there, the one park, as you get into Murphys on the right-hand side of the road, Feeny Park, thank you, possibly a charging station there for those, that bus to be able to get up the hill or even back down the hill.
We can definitely take a look at it.
Okay. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments in the room? No public comments or suggestions in the room? How about online?
There are none online.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back. That was an informational item. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
I think all the board has made their comments, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number seventeen. This is an agreement from the administrative office. This has authorized the board chair to execute an agreement with Lion Akis for their Phase One program and feasibility study for the District Attorney's Building. I see Barbara's in the room. In an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, with a term ending July thirty-first, 2023, which is gonna be here real quick. And two, authorize the county executive officer to sign amendments to the agreement, if any, if any, so long as it does not affect and does not exceed the amount. And our CEO, or Jamie's gonna do it.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Toffenelli. Jamie Andriola with my office will be handling this item.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. In December of 2022, the board authorized the purchasing agent to request qualifications for the architectural and engineering services for the Calaveras County District Attorney Building. In response to the county's request for qualifications, the county received three qualifications from three firms. The qualifications were reviewed by a committee of seven, and Lion Akis was deemed the most experienced and qualified by the committee. Lion Akis is proposing a two-phased approach to the building. The contract for approval today is for Phase One. Phase One will consist of a program and budget feasibility study. This phase will help the county in defining the proposed project as well as creating a plan for future development as needed. Based on the program and budget feasibility study, Lion Akis will be able to provide a preliminary cost estimate. Phase Two will include the basic architectural and engineering design services from schematic design through the construction administration. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? No questions? Is there any questions from the public? No public questions on this item? Online?
None online.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board, and I'm open for a motion.
I'll happily move this item, Mr. Toffenelli.
Motion by Supervisor Stoppa?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fallendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero with one absent. I want to take just about a three-minute break before we go on to the next item. All right, we're gonna move on to item number eighteen. This is an agreement with the administrative office. Authorize the board chair to execute an agreement with the LDA partners for the Phase One programming and conceptual design for the animal shelter in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, five-hundred dollars, with a term ending August eleventh, 2023. And two, authorize the county executive officer to sign amendments to the agreement, if any, so long as it does not affect the not-to-exceed amounts. And Jamie, you taking this one on, too?
I am.
Welcome, Jamie. Good to see you again.
Thank you. It's been a long time. I'm very honored to actually present this item to you guys today. In December 2022, the board authorized the purchasing agent to request, to post a request for qualifications for the architectural and engineering services for the Calaveras County Animal Shelter. In response to the county's request for qualifications, the county received qualifications from five firms. Those qualifications were reviewed by a committee of six, and LDA partners was deemed the most experienced and qualified by the committee. LDA partners is proposing a two-phased approach to the building of the new animal shelter. The contract for approval today is for Phase One. Phase One will consist of programming and conceptual design, along with a geotechnical survey and report, and a hazardous material survey for the existing facility. Based on the programming site plan and conceptual plans, LDA will be able to provide a preliminary cost estimate that will include the costs of the building, site improvements, professional fees, and miscellaneous expenses. Phase Two will consist of the design development, construction documents, and construction administration. I would like to note that there was a minor correction in the staff report referring to how the scope of work relates to the sequel mitigation measures. The scope of work includes having the contractor review the mitigation measures that apply to the construction of the shelter and the resulting special reports, so that the structure can be designed as feasible to minimize the potential impacts identified in the project NND, the mitigated negative declaration, not the EIR, the environmental impact review. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any board questions?
Yes, I had a question for you, Jamie. So in reading the scope of work, I saw it was pretty broad for the rest of the property design. Could you talk more on, not just the physical building, but the scope of work that's gonna be done for large animals outside on that same property?
So all of that will be talked about and designed in Phase One. So they got the generic kind of scope that we worked with UC Davis to design for the shelter itself, but everything else will be worked out through Phase One.
Okay, I just wanted that clarity. Thank you.
Supervisor Heberty?
Yes, could I ask, Jamie, really quickly, the Phase Two, how long is that phase?
We're hoping that construction, if everything stays on par, would actually be completed in 2025, summer of, roughly.
Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions? If not, I'll open up to the public. Is there any public comments or questions with big smiles on our face? Finally, we're moving forward.
We'd like to really, really, really thank Marcos and Jamie. They've done a fabulous job. You guys should be very proud to have such fabulous employees. We just love them, and we, we hope we're working well with you guys. We'd like to thank all of you, the most progressive board that's ever been in Calaveras County, because you've improved all of them. We are honored to this. So we'd like to thank you so very much and let you know that we're, once we get the design, you get the design phase done, we'll start fundraising to help you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, I'm a little emotional. I've been doing this for twenty years, so.
Any other comments?
Oh, now we understand you. She said it all.
I think it's more than twenty years.
It is. I agree.
But, well, I've been watching for twenty-five years or so, but I understand that it started many years before that, so that's why I mentioned thirty-seven years. We've been talking about this, and I agree. This is the most progressive board that we've ever seen. We've had one or two here and there, but they're only one or two votes, you know, so it makes a difference. So, and I wanted to say, as a member of the Red Cross, we are so honored and grateful to be able to work with the county and with animal services and with this group, because during an emergency, like I said before, and I'm sorry I came to the wrong, the wrong agenda item, but it did this, being repeated, that, um, I'm distracted by these adorable songs you have. Anyway, we're so grateful to be able to work with them because we could not serve the community and the people who are evacuated if we can't take care of their critters and their livestock at home. And so that's why it's, it's essential that we have many partners. So we're honored to be one of many partners, and there was something I wanted to share with you, and the songs distracted me from that, but this, this is an historic vote, so I'm looking for a four, one, zero vote. So kudos to you. I'm sure I'll think, the minute I sit down, I'll think about what I wanted to tell you, but it's because we're so excited, you know? This is historic, so thank you so much.
Any other public comments? All right, we'll close. Is there any public comments online?
There are no online public comments.
No online public comments, so we'll bring it back to the board, and I am open for a motion.
Thank you. In honor of Marita.
He's excited.
Wanted to, just, first of all, if I could just say, you're angels. Debbie, Alex, thank you so much for all that you do, your passion, your energy. It's, it's contagious, so I would like to make a motion, please.
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Heberty, a second by Supervisor Fallendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero with one absent.
Be sure and tell Marita her song.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you. Thank you for the government side.
You're welcome. You guys stick around for the supervisory announcements? What? Stick around for the supervisor.
I gotta get a paper. I have a meeting next. I have to share. I'm gonna show it in my mother-love girl hatline. Gotta show the song.
Design. Design, though. All right, we will move on to the last item on our agenda. This is a supervisor's announcement. In compliance with Government Code 53232, that point three D, board members shall provide brief reports on the meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. We'll start with Supervisor Heberty.
Thank you, Chair. I attended the Area Twelve Agency on Aging last Thursday, the thirteenth. It was a great meeting, and they actually were very helpful on a program that I'd like to get started here in the county regarding snow removal of berms for our seniors.
Thank you. Supervisor Fallendorf?
I have nothing to report. I'll just thank you for those of you that have taken my place over the last week on alternate meetings. Thanks.
You're welcome. Supervisor Stoppa?
Oh, I have generally nothing to report, you know, just was a little put out Wednesday having to replace another supervisor's spot.
I see.
It was fine. It went well. I appreciate actually being in the know a little bit more with the cog and everything, and, yeah, no, it's, it's interesting.
It was great having you there.
Yeah.
And your comments were good.
And your comments were good.
So I have, I say that I went to the COG meeting last Wednesday, attended that meeting, and then I attended a Mountain County EMS agency meeting yesterday. We resolved an issue in Mariposa County with ambulance service, and I came to agreement with Mercy there, at least for another 90 days, until we get a contract in place with them. So those are my comments, and I, with that, we will adjourn the meeting for today. Thank you very much for attending.